Order the March 3rd, 2021 Corvoo Planning and Zoning Meeting is now called to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Wenman.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Nguyen.
There.
Aaron's.
Here.
And Knutson is not here currently.
All right, so we have five members. Do we have any corrections to the agenda? Dave, you have anything on that?
I do not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Nguyen, seconded.
Second.
By Wenman. Can we all vote on approving the agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Any corrections to the February 3rd, 2021 minute meetings? Minutes, meeting minutes, sorry. Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 3rd meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Wilson, second.
Second.
Second by Taylor. We will now vote on approving the minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We will now go into the agenda item number five. But before we do, before we open up the public hearing, if those of you on the Zoom side, if you want to use the little raise your hand button at the bottom of the window to speak as we open up the public hearing, we would encourage you to do so. Agenda item number five. Public hearing request by Crossing Land LLC to recommend a PUDB site plan and final plat for Eagle Bend at Clear Creek, Part One. I will now open the public hearing. I don't believe we have anybody to speak on this.
I think Josh Antler would like to speak. Yes, thank you, Dave. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Thank you, staff and Planning Zoning Commission for your time this evening. And also thank you to the commission and staff for their support in the PUDA phase, the global master plan that we worked through and found a solution at the tail end of last year. This is the first step of our overall master plan. So this is Phase One of the overall plan for 124 acres. We believe we've worked through all of the potential kinks with staff. So again, thank you for your support on that. And we're looking forward to a successful start here in the spring. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would wish to speak during the public hearing portion? Not seeing or hearing any. I'm now going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, seconded. Ron, you want second? Seconded by Wenman, discussion. Dave, anything to add to this one?
No, this is, you have seen this before. Part One is actually a 27 acre development. There's going to be 23 lots. The average density is 1.17 dwelling units per acre. The applicant's requesting some flexibility in allowing a corner side yard setback of 20 feet, whereas the typical requirement is 30 feet. And a rear setback of 25 feet, whereas the typical requirement is 30 feet. And a minimum lot frontage width requirement of 70 feet, whereas the typical requirement is 80 feet. This is consistent with the PUD. We generally allow these sorts of flexibilities in site design. When in turn, we are getting a better development or some sort of amenities are being preserved. In this case, this development, especially the overall 123 acres, is going to great lengths to preserve some quality tree stands, which will become an amenity for this development. So the city is not at all opposed to the slightly smaller lot sizes with this. If everybody can see my screen, I can kind of jump down to some of the sample home designs that are being proposed with this. Just to give people an idea of the types of homes, what's been provided to us are homes that are actually on Ava Circle in Iowa City, immediately adjacent and connecting to Part One of this development. Again, these are very typical building materials and housing forms that we'll see in Part One. This gives you an idea of the color palettes, building materials. And that's all I have.
Yeah, this is Mike. I'll just chime in. I think this is the development that we had a lot of feedback from the area residents, Iowa City residents, I guess predominantly. And I'm sure they will, you know, approve of preserving as much of that woodland as possible. So I appreciate the accommodation on that.
Any other discussion on this? We will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Wilson.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the final plat?
So moved.
Moved by Wenman, seconded.
Me.
Wilson, sold. Discussion. All right, we'll now vote on approval of the final plat. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Wilson.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number six. Public hearing request by BB Co. LLC to recommend the rezoning from C2 to C3 to CPUD2, PUDB site plan, preliminary and final plat for Town Center One, Lot One. I will now open up the public hearing. Remember, those who wish to talk, please use the raise hand picture. I will now close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to consider approval of the rezoning?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, seconded.
Second.
By Nguyen, discussion.
I was trying to wrap my head around the parking situation and just wondered if anybody could clarify. It says that we're going to have 80 dwelling units. The parking, I thought was interesting. 75 stalls enclosed on the lower level and remaining 44 stalls are evenly divided on-street and off-street parking. So on-street parking with Coralville not having any overnight on-street parking, does this mean we're going to have residents who don't have somewhere to park? I just had a little bit of confusion there.
Molly, let me, and the way I worded that may have been confusing. Let me share my screen.
Oh, thanks.
I'll show you. You can see all of this. When I say on-street, what we're talking about are these stalls here. So these stalls are going to provide, there's going to be parking inside of the building. These stalls are going to provide parking. And then we're also going to have additional parking back here.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, so I, and I'm sorry, also, if you see my cursor, parking is here. So it's not technically on-street. Maybe it's right off the street, I guess, is probably the best way for me to have worded that. Does that make more sense?
That makes sense. Yeah, that does, absolutely. Thank you.
Where is this development again? Or this building?
This is going to be the approximately 250 feet north of the corner of 10th Avenue and Second Street.
Okay.
Just north of the bank, Mike.
Which bank?
What's the one on the corner?
West Bank.
West Bank, there you go.
So there's right now, there's like a apartment building and like a building that had hearing aids or vacuum cleaners for a little while, right? This is that, that spot.
Right, this is, this is south of the multi-tenant building with the vacuum cleaner store.
Gotcha.
And there may be also a small grocer in there as well.
Okay.
And here's the site plan, if you guys can see my screen. This kind of gives you an idea here of how the property relates to Fifth Street, 10th Avenue, and Second.
That used to be my favorite Chinese place.
Yeah.
Progress.
Any more discussion? We will now vote on approval of the rezoning. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Nguyen, seconded by Wilson. Discussion.
Let's vote.
All right. We will now vote on approval of the PUDB site plan. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. We will now vote, or can I get a motion to consider recommending approval of the final plat? Oh, preliminary plat, sorry, first, preliminary plat.
So moved.
Moved by Taylor.
Second.
Second by Wilson. Any discussion on this? We will now vote on the approval of the preliminary plat. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Knutson. Knutson.
Aye.
Sorry, I was.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the final plat? Moved by Wenman, seconded by Wilson. Any discussion on this? We will now vote on the approval of the final plat. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Agenda item number seven. Public hearing request by Coral Ridge Avenue Commercial LLC to recommend the rezoning from CPUD1 to CPUD2 and PUDB site plan for Lot One, Red Hawk subdivision, Part Two. I will now open the public hearing. Remember to raise your hand if you.
John Marner would like to speak. Commissioner Aaron's.
Thank you. John Marner with MMS Consultants, speaking briefly on behalf of the applicant. And I believe he's on this meeting as well and will be available for any questions, if you have any during the discussion. Proposal is to put together a commercial pud site plan. It's got two, this particular one is for one building. I think if you see the site plan as you move forward, there's two buildings that are being developed side by side with shared parking and a shared drive-through lane. This is a first development on the commercial portion of Red Hawk subdivision, where the multifamily has already started construction. I believe there's a couple of buildings and a clubhouse up out there currently. Has a drive-through. The applicant, there's already a tenant associated with Lot One, the northern lot. And they're anxious to, that's a coffee shop, and they're anxious to go ahead and get started with that, the site, to try to reduce traffic at their other properties within the Iowa City Corvoo area. And like I said, I'm available for questions if you have any. And I believe the applicant, Josh Siemens, is on the phone as well, or on the meeting as well, and he's available also.
Have anybody else that wish to speak on the public hearing?
So I think I have, I think I know where this is. I have a question. This is 965, right? There's a nice bike trail that goes along that. How will that connect to this coffee shop?
This would be north of the penitentiary or the classification center, sorry.
Right, right. It goes right along Coral Ridge Avenue there, what we're looking at. And I'm trying to figure out, can you just jump to this development? Is there going to be a connector? Or you have to go down Wheaton Road and around to get to it?
Let me pull that up for a moment here.
Dave, I can speak to that too as well, if you'd like.
Yeah, please do. And I'll upload up on a map and we can kind of show that on the aerial.
So there is the existing trail that you referenced along the west side of Coral Ridge Avenue. You can't see it as part of this plan. There's a connecting pedestrian pathway. I'm not sure if, you remember from the Red Hawk, the original Red Hawk subdivision, there's a connecting pathway about right in the middle of where the commercial properties are that allows access from the trail over to Red Hawk Street on the west. And then that trail system can even have a sidewalk that will eventually connect up through both on the east and the west. The entrance into the property can come from along Wheaton Road. Otherwise, again, you'll be able to enter the site via the sidewalk along Red Hawk and then into the property along the private drive.
Thank you. Talking about, that's, that's great. I'm glad that is connected like that.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to consider approval of the rezoning?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, seconded.
Second.
Second by Nguyen. Any further discussion on this one? All right, we will now go ahead and vote on approval of the rezoning. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carried six to zero. Do we have a motion to consider approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Wilson, second.
Second.
Second by Knutson. Any discussion on this? We will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number eight. Public hearing request by Coral Commerce Investors LLC to recommend the rezoning from CUDB1, CPUD1 to CPUD2 and a PUDB site plan for Lot Two, Red Hawk subdivision, Part Two. I will now open the public hearing. I will now close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the rezoning?
So moved.
Moved by Wilson, second.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Discussion on this one. So this would be the bottom half of this property.
Does this have a tenant?
That I don't know, Mike.
I'm not sure. I don't know whether the applicant would know or be willing or able to share. John, John Marner, and both John and Josh do have their hands up. They would like to speak.
I'll defer to Josh. Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, so this is Josh Siemens. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to consider this. We, we are in discussions and in negotiations with a single tenant to occupy that entire building. Yes, nothing is done and finalized, but they, they were pretty far along.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We will now vote on the approval of the rezoning. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to nothing. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Knutson. Any further discussion on this? We will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Knutson.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number nine. Public hearing request by J. Jessica LLC to recommend approval of the PUDB site plan for Coral Crossing, Eighth Edition, Lot 14. I will now open the public hearing.
And Commissioner Aaron's, John Marner has raised his hand and would like to speak.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. John Marner with MMS Consultants. This is a continuation of the Coral Crossing development that exists to the east and the south. It's been a mix of townhomes and 32 plexes, I think 32 and 36 plexes further to the east. So it's proposals for a mix of four plexes, I think one duplex and a threeplex. It's a private drive with a connecting private drive over to the east into Spring Rose, Spring Rose Drive. I'm available for any questions. And I believe the developer, Jake Evans, is also on the meeting and available, if you have questions for him as well.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm, I'm, sorry, I bike everywhere in this town. I've often wondered if it'd be nice, there's a, there's that lake down there, you can see it, that has a trail on it. Is there any plans to kind of connect this neighborhood to that trail? That goes along, what is that, the recreational area? I know it's a retention lake, but kind of behind Costco there. And I think that'd be a nice feature if we could connect that, this area down to that, down to that trail that's already there. It's kind of a dead-end trail, a useless trail now. And, and connecting it to a neighborhood would be nice.
Mike, I'll note that and check our trail network plan. And I can follow up with you on that.
Yeah. I've always, I've always wondered why they put that trail along that, along that lake. And, and for years have made no attempt to connect it to anything.
Generally speaking, Corleville, every opportunity we have, we like to place trails around detention areas, lakes, ponds, and as well as make connections. So like, my short answer is I don't exactly know how that will connect. I'm sure it will. What I need to do is just look that up for you.
Yeah, it seems like this is the neighborhood to connect it to at some point, but.
And, and Dave, we talked last month regarding the neighboring addition about extension, Joe, the Boulevard all the way down. Is that going to have to happen with, before they can develop this part two?
Yeah, as part of the development agreement with, with this project, the developer is going to need to commit to a date specific on connecting either Jones Boulevard or Spring Rose Circle.
Thank you.
Dave, could I, or commission, could I speak briefly on the trail connection?
Sure.
There is the existing trail that runs south and east of the property. The, the screen that Dave has up currently in the southeast corner of Coral Crossing, there's two of the larger multifamily. Actually, Dave, you were, you were good if you can go back to kind of a close-up view of that.
That worked for you?
Yeah. It was, it was close enough.
All right.
Can you zoom in on the location map? Yep, perfect. The, in the, in the southeast corner, there's two, as you come around Spring Rose Circle, there's two, there's the larger multifamily buildings. And as part of the previously approved overall pud, there is a trail connection that connects from Spring Rose Circle to the existing trail that runs on the south and kind of runs down towards that Ewell Recreation Area. So there is an opportunity for that to connect in the future as part of that previously approved pud. Now, the schedule for when that connection might be made, it depends on how quickly those build out. But there is a connection provided there.
Excellent. Thank you, John. I appreciate that.
I will now close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Nguyen, seconded.
Second.
By Wilson, discussion. Anybody have any further questions, comments? We will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Sure can. Nguyen.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Wenman.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number 10. A public hearing request by J. Jessica LLC to recommend approval of a PUDB site plan for Lot 62, Bridgewater, Part Four. I will now open the public hearing on this one. John, you want to speak on this one?
Sure, thank you. This is for, again, a continuation of, there was an overall approved pud A, pud One, pud A site plan that was done previously for the entirety of the Bridgewater subdivision area. The individual residential subdivision homes have already been built out with the street system that's shown on the location map that you see on your screen right now. This proposal or this proposed site plan is for the site plan to extend a private drive off of High Country Place, a little bit to the south, then eventually over to the east into a dead end. There's a turnaround provided at the far south end where the, the grades begin to drop off significantly as it gets down into the ravine closer to the detention area to the east. And again, I'm available for any questions. And I believe the developer's on the meeting as well, and he's available for questions.
Any further public inquiry? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to recommend approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Nguyen, seconded.
Second.
By Wenman, discussion.
And Dave, well, that road eventually continued farther south and opened up the area to the south end closest to the interstate?
Well, I believe that's as far as that's going to go. John, did you have any information on that?
Yeah, there's no way that road's going anywhere.
Yeah, I think we talked about this at staff level and it's due to topography, that's, that's really the extent of it.
I think, the original plan, there were some apartments down there closer to the interstate.
I, I can speak to that, uh, if you, if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Are, are you referring, before I answer, are you referring to the end of this private drive that's shown on this plan? Or are you, are you referring to, Dave, can you go back to the previous, previous view that you had? Or are you referring to along the left edge of this site plan that where there's a little bit of intersection with the private drives?
Yes, that road.
Yeah, so there is, again, that the previously approved pud one, pud A site plan that shows, uh, that street extending down to the south further and there are, uh, multifamily, a mix of townhomes and larger, uh, multifamily buildings that are proposed, uh, and were previously approved as part of that pud A. Again, for, for right now, this is the portion of the development that developers prepared it to move forward with. But there is a, a previously approved plan for what you described.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ron, I thought you meant Hidden, Hidden Ridge Drive.
Any further discussion? We will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Wenmen.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number eleven, public hearing request by the Governor Group LLC to recommend approval of a PUDB site plan for lot one Corville Industrial Park number two sixth edition. I will now open the public hearing on this.
I believe Mike Welch will speak to this.
Go ahead, Mike, when you're ready.
Hello, Commission members and staff. Can appreciate the time put into this at the staff level, um, to get to this point. This is the PUDB site plan for nineteen sixty James Street. It's the third and final piece of the nineteen hundred, nineteen thirty and nineteen sixty James Street development. I'm available if there's any questions on the, on the project and I believe, uh, the developer is also on the call tonight too.
All right. Does anybody else that wish to speak on this? I will now close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, seconded.
Second.
By, uh, Wilson, sorry. Discussion. Dave, anything to add on this one?
No, um, not too much. Uh, this, this development is actually going to be, uh, helping manage stormwater both for this site, um, as well as the property to the east. This is going to be a twenty-two thousand one hundred fifty-two square foot, uh, office and warehouse building. Uh, building materials appear to be in keeping with what we're encouraging for an industrial property. Uh, everything else, uh, including the landscaping has been reviewed and, um, complies with, uh, development standards.
Dave, did you say this is going to help with stormwater, um, runoff or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, here's the, here's the current site. When this was originally planned, um, stormwater from nineteen thirty is, was supposed to be accommodated here. So now that this development is happening, um, we're going to be managing, um, some of this stormwater as well as, uh, the development on the, the subject property right here.
Any further discussion? We will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Wilson.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Wenmen.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number twelve, request by Corville Housing, uh, two LLC to recommend approval of the final plat for Coral North Apartments. Um, do you have a motion to consider recommending approval of the final plat?
So moved.
Seconded by Nguyen, seconded by Knutson. Discussion. Dave, what would you, anything to add here?
No, uh, staff has reviewed the final plat. Uh, this is the last step in the, um, development review phase in terms of site plan and plating, and, uh, we support it.
Any further discussion? We will now vote on the approval of the final plat. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Wenmen.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Agenda item number thirteen, public hearing request by the city of Corville to recommend consideration of fireworks sales ordinance. I will now open the public hearing on this one. I'll probably now close the public hearing on this one. Do you have a motion to consider recommending the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Moved by Wenmen, second.
Second.
Second by Knutson. Discussion. So does this mean we can't have the big, uh, circus tent there on First Avenue?
This would prevent the big circus tent on First Avenue. Actually, um, that as well as other operations were kind of been placed on our radar, uh, the last couple of years. And, um, in all of our attempts to enforce zoning codes in terms of, of outdoor storage and, and those sorts of matters, it was brought to our attention by these operators that outdoor storage is really inherent with these. They need that. It is essential, uh, whether it be the RV that they're operating out of for a month or storage containers that they have merchandise and products in. Um, they're using that for both onsite sale as well as distribution to area stores. Um, we quickly decided these are really best suited in our I two and I three, uh, industrial zoning districts where outdoor storage is permissible. Um, it can much more, uh, it can be much better managed, uh, in, in those districts as well. So, uh, we're bringing forth this ordinance to restrict, uh, the sale of, uh, consumer fireworks. Again, this, this doesn't impact novelty fireworks, um, you know, the snakes and the, you know, the sparklers and, and things like that. This is the, um, auto rockets, roman candles, larger, um, I believe they call it pyrotechnive, pyrotechnic explosives in them. Um, it really just manages that. So this will not have any, any impact on, uh, retailers or, um, the ability to sell novelty fireworks as is currently the case.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We will now vote on the approval of the ordinance. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, uh, Wilson.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Wenmen.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
And Aaron's.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. Any news or things to consider for next month?
No, uh, you know, we're working with, uh, a developer for a potential project, uh, uh, along, uh, Second Street, uh, west of the Walgreens, um, just south of our, uh, Town Center District. Um, that'll be, um, a potential mixed use, uh, mixed residential project. Hopefully we'll see, uh, PUDA site plan on that for the April meeting. And, uh, that's really the, the big things on our radar at this time. I know that for Evergreen Heights, uh, the two hundred and thirty-four acre, uh, mixed residential development northeast part of town. Uh, that, the PUDA was approved. I do know that they are working on the PUDB, uh, for phase one. We might be able to see that, uh, for the April first meeting. And, um, IRL Parkview building number two is also under design. Uh, that has the potential to also appear on a April, uh, planning and zoning commission meeting. And uh, I would, yeah, I would anticipate, uh, hopefully also a final plat for Augern Ridge, uh, which is that area that is being annexed. Uh, it's about forty-four acres. I believe the commission reviewed that at your, your last meeting. And that's scheduled to go before the, uh, city development board, uh, with the state of Iowa, April thirteenth. So that annexation has the potential to become official, uh, on that date. It's really what we're kind of working on. We had a really big agenda, uh, this month. Uh, so we get to, uh, move a lot of projects along. We're very excited about that.
Good.
Any, any discussion yet of in-person meetings?
Um, not as of yet. Uh, I actually just inquired on that today. There's been discussions, but I think the city may be, um, waiting a little bit longer to see what the state does and, um, with a mandate. And then that'll give us a chance to respond.
Yeah.
Mike, are you eager to meet in person again?
Hey, I was vaccinated two months ago.
Oh, good for you.
Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Wenmen, seconded by Wilson. The meeting is now adjourned.
Yeah, thank you.